Please stand. The pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence for two of Clinton Public Schools' finest, retired math teacher David Kilborn and preschool teacher Kim Patterson. Thank you. Please be seated. This is the Monday, April 22nd, meeting of the Clinton School Committee. I'd like to start with a motion to approve the bills. So moved, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the bills? There being none. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of April 8th, 2019?
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you. Motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes from April 8th? There being none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Do we have a student report tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The CHS Step Up to Excellence junior members put on the annual senior citizen dance two weeks ago on Tuesday, April 9th. A variety of donations from businesses throughout the community were given out, and every senior present walked away with a gift. The whole night was tons of fun, and Step Up volunteers worked well to make the event an enjoyable experience for adults and students alike. CHS broke off for April vacation last week, but an adventurous group of staff and students decided to escape school early on Friday and hop on a plane to cross the Atlantic. Yes, the Language Department's annual week-long trip to Spain took some of our more adventurous Spanish students to the country of castles, sun, and plenty of new cultures. The students visited museums, restaurants, and many other attractions across the countryside and in the cities. Our travelers returned to the country over the weekend and are all reportedly very exhausted, but very glad they were able to take this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Clinton's own first robotics team, 126, will be traveling to Michigan this week for the International Championship in Detroit. Galeforce will be departing before the sun rises on Wednesday morning and will be returning on Sunday, April 28th. They've prepared their tools and shipped the robot, and now students and mentors alike are packing their luggage with green and gold to represent CHS and cheer Clinton on as they battle top teams from all over the world. Good luck, Galeforce. The CHS Student Council will be hosting the last blood drive of the school year next Friday, May 3rd, from 7:30 to 12:30 in the high school gymnasium. As always, donuts, homemade cookies, snacks, and drinks will be served throughout the day to all donors. Come out and support the senior student council members for their final blood drive and help save lives across the nation. Six Clinton musicians have been selected to play in the 2019 John Philip Sousa Honor Band Festival and Mechanics Hall in Worcester on Saturday, April 20th. Tickets are available online through the Mechanics Hall box office, and more info can be found on the CHS website. Clinton Public School band students in grades 5 through 12 will be attending, and playing in the concert will be middle school musicians Lillian Mifert, Hudson Bomberg, Winston Townsend, and Rachel Wilder. High school band participants will be Devon Arario and Jacob Salvi. Good luck to all of them and their performances. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Thanks, Gerald. Do we have anything from the PTA tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The PTA would like to thank our community and everyone that came to our bingo night a few weeks ago. We raised just under $4,000. I don't have the exact amount because I've been running around all day and I just got here. So we want to just say thank you for everyone that donated, everyone that helped out, and just our community for coming and having such a successful event. Our next PTA meeting is Thursday, May 9th, in the CES library.
Anything from Special Needs PAC?
Our next meeting will be May 7th at the elementary school, and our June meeting, we will be having a guest speaker coming from the Ark of Opportunity in north-central Massachusetts, and the division directors coming to talk about opportunities for our students that extend past high school that might, you know, be 18 or older. So, all are welcome. And we're going to gear our flyers to that group of students.
Any questions for Kelly? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything from the CTA tonight? Okay. Is there any public comment? As always, we're happy to revisit it if we need to at the end. So, I'm sure while most of you are here for the enriching discussions on policy, we do have some celebrations to get to. So we'll start with the...
Well, we start with the high school.
Sure.
We'll kind of go in reverse order because we've got a couple makeups.
Exactly.
So...
Jan has requested that we use this as our photo area.
Let me just cover my belly. For the high school student of the month, I want to invite Antonio Nees. It's our honor this evening to recognize our CHS student of the month, Antonio Nees. Antonio is a student who never shies away from the more challenging courses as he registers for classes each year. And his ability to analyze material in class and to express himself and to give opinions and to respond to teachers has given nothing but the highest honors and making honor roll each and every one of the quarters that he's been here for these past two years. Beyond the classroom, he is also very involved in sports, going with a tradition of football family, as to say the least. He, as a sophomore presently, is one of the captains of the track team as a sophomore. And for next year, he has been chosen already as a junior to be captain of the football team. And he's also a member of the Excel team. But the reason why I chose Antonio is a bit of a contradiction. I'm going against my own pattern in the sense that he is someone who always volunteers and does so quietly. So for me to call him up to receive this in front of the whole town is kind of a contradiction on my part, but he does things quietly. You know, things like at the end of football, basketball games, he's over there cleaning up afterwards, helping our custodians. And he's just a person, whenever there's a need to volunteer, he's the person that's always first in line. So he's a silent hero, and I am very honored this evening to recognize him for doing things and doing many things, and doing so with all praise except for tonight, and also to step up to be the man that he is. I'm very honored to hear this.
We'll go to middle school next. All right. Emily? All right. Is anyone expecting the students here?
She's supposed to be coming.
Okay. Why don't we go with the elementary school then?
Good evening, everybody. We have two student of the months. One was from last month who, unfortunately for himself, took a wonderful vacation, wasn't able to make it to the school committee meeting. We want to bring up Grady O'Malley. So Grady is a student. Every now and then, a program, you love to see when a program works. And this particular year, with the help of the leadership team, the vision of Dr. Meyer and Meg, they worked hard on bringing in a program called Read 180. Now, Read 180 is a supplemental program that assists students in the areas of reading needs. And Grady is our star pupil for that program this year. Grady continues to work hard. He is now a third grader in... Over there. And he is able to, has come this year, worked so hard on his reading skills. In the past, it might have been some struggles, but he's always had the work ethic in order to make sure that he was improving. This year, with the program, we have found out that he's not only able to take what he's learning in that area, but he's bringing it to the classroom also. So for us, we look at it as a leadership team, we're at a great investment, that program was. You know what? If it works for one child, it is more than met its match. It's doing exactly what it's supposed to be doing. Ms. Grady would tell us that he's working very hard in his classroom, and we are honored because Grady O'Malley has earned the certificate of achievement. This is exactly the way it should be stated. We are proud of him for everything he's done, and he's our improved person as far as when it comes to reading skills. The second student of the month we have, this is student of the month is for April. We're going to move away from academics because if anybody knows about the Clinton school system, our students definitely come out with challenging academics. But more so than anything, our children come out as young adults. They come out with something you can't necessarily teach in a textbook. They demonstrate, as Mr. Hastings had nomination for our Mr. Nees, we have a child too. His name is John LJ Bosno. So John, come on up. And so John is... This is what's going on. John was... LJ was nominated by his teacher, Ms. Zinkus, and Ms. Zinkus is in the third grade for demonstrating ultimate kindness. Another student was saying how he really needed some new basketball shoes, and LJ went home that night and looked in his closet and decided he had some pairs of basketball shoes in good condition. He got some new laces, laced up a pair of shoes, and brought them into his friend to keep. LJ recognized that his friend was really good at sports, but his shoes were just a little too small, so he got him some new shoes so he could keep playing and getting better at his sport. That is what we are all about. That is our school system. So academics aside, LJ is this type of student that is going to grow from here to the middle school to the high school. He's a young man that's going to do amazing things throughout his life. We are very proud of him.
We'll do our staff member, and then we'll get our last student.
I would say there's a large contingency here that maybe has come to the fact, and we want to bring up Kathy Small. All right? I'm going to let Meg read because, as long as she doesn't go to tears about Kathy. All I'm going to say is that Kathy has been with me as far as in the school for the past six years. She is an ultimate professional. She's trained probably more nurses than we've hired in the other buildings altogether. She started off as the second nurse at one time, and then she is now the nurse leader at the elementary school. As I said, I'll let Meg talk about her because my words won't matter. You don't have to do anything with Kathy. Kathy is the ultimate professional in what she does. She does not need any guidance. She's going to take care of things, and I am so lucky in order to have her as a principal. A good nurse is a necessity in all that you do. And so I'm very proud in order to not only have her as a partner nurse, but to be a friend of ours here. And then I'll let Meg take over from there.
All right. So you are nominated probably the most consistently by several of your colleagues. And if you look around the room, I'd say a lot of people are here because of you. And I'm not going to cry. This is why I don't do this.
I know.
So when I think of choosing a staff of the month, I think about the meaning of the acronym Pirate. P is passion, I immersion, R rapport, A is for asking and analyzing, T is for transforming, and E is for enthusiasm. When reading everybody's recommendations on Kathy, Kathy demonstrates the Pirate meaning every single day. She loves her work. She has a passion for serving and helping others very quietly, and it is so evident in the way she interacts with both students and staff. Whether it's a hangnail, a bloody nose, a hungry belly, or me coming because I believe I'm having a stroke or a heart attack, Kathy cares for whatever comes her way with the most empathy. They say listening is a true art. Kathy is fully immersed in her work with students. She's small but mighty, and she'll even kneel down in front of our little kiddos and listen to their concerns within ten. She knows every single issue in the building, from allergy to fracture to worry to true medical need to someone who might forget a snap or someone that just needs an extra TLC this day on their fourth visit to her office. She goes above and beyond, behind the scenes, to ensure that all concerns are addressed proactively whenever she can. There are so many things Kathy does behind the scenes and quietly and humbly that I can't even accurately capture here. Rapport is the necessary ingredient in any success. Just the other day, Kathy received a bouquet of flowers from a parent thanking her for going above and beyond for her child. She makes endless calls to families. She is calm every single time. She has so many frequent flyers that visit her office, which demonstrates her students' ability to trust her. Not only does she serve the students and families, but many staff have run to her, and she is able to support and offer advice. Her office is one of the busiest places in the building, which is a large testament to her ability to build and maintain rapport. Asking and analyzing, ensuring student safety is a top priority for Kathy. She volunteers on every committee we ask. Kathy thinks about everything on a whole, right down to the individual needs. This year, she became a national certified nurse and always continues to reflect and grow to do the best she can do for our students. Transformation means we go above and beyond. We value students and our colleagues, and we recognize they want to be around people who are remarkable. Remarkable means that you are so exceptional and different that people talk about you, but in a good way. Being merely good, her status quo doesn't cut it. You have to be extraordinary in your work, and this is Kathy. Asking the staff to share some thoughts on her, there is never a negative, which just speaks to her effectiveness. Even on the days when Kathy is tired from whatever, she's so busy, she shows up with enthusiasm to do her job well and serve our school community. This coupled with her passion is consistently demonstrated in her commitment to being on. Her attitude alone is the single most powerful tool that she uses to do her job as well as she does. To sum it up, Mrs. Madeiros said, I don't have the right words to speak to Kathy's effectiveness, but to put it simply, she is amazing in every way, every day.
We are very proud and honored to have.
Good evening, everyone. We are honored to have Deoscar Fernandez, if you would come up and join us. So I'm going to talk first in English, and then I'm going to translate it in Spanish. And this is Mrs. Rulo, and she is his teacher here at the middle school. So Deoscar Fernandez is an 11-year-old student who moved to the United States from... Nahuatl. Dominican Republic. He joined Clinton Middle School in the fifth grade and is currently enrolled in the ESL program. Deoscar has come a long way in a short period of time. He is learning new vocabulary, words every week. He always comes to school with a smile on his face and willing to learn. Deoscar is doing a nice job adapting to the school culture and continues to work on forming friendships at school. We are proud of his accomplishments, and we are looking forward to seeing him develop in all academic areas. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right. We have one last special recognition today, so Kathy Buchanan, I think is going to recognize it. Mr. Chamberlain is here.
Well, everybody, I'd like to let you know that Clinton has a new hero. I'd like to call Michael Gomez up. Hi, Michael. Michael is one of our students who goes to one of our out-of-district placements, and I'd like to introduce you to Paula Donahue. Paula is the special ed director for Summit Academy. Michael knows her very well, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On April 2nd, 2019, on Autism Awareness Day, Michael arrived at school like any other ordinary day. However, his bus driver was not feeling very well and was trying to reach the Van Poel office. The bus driver asked Michael to go into the school to get help. Now, they're not supposed to do that because the teachers try to keep everybody under control so nobody's running into the building. So the rules of the school told him that he needed to wait until the teacher told him to go in. But he ran by the teacher and went into the school anyway to get help and asked them to call 911. The school called 911, and the bus driver, who suffered a cardiac event, went to the hospital and is okay today due to Michael's fast thinking. Paula, you want to tell us what Michael said?
Well, from what I understand, when he was stopped at the door by one of our teachers, Michael did indeed go by her saying, "I can't, I have something very important I have to say," and went into the office. Is that how it went, Michael? Yeah. And he went to the office. And told the office manager and chewed out. But it was Michael's quick thinking because me and him is in serious jeopardy at the moment.
Yeah, it was. So we have some special guests here tonight. We have Paula and Michael's teacher. We also have some of the folks from Van Poel. And of course, we have someone from the Clinton Fire Department. And Michael, we have some things that we want to give you. The first thing I would like to give you is the student of the month certificate. You are the first student from an out-of-district school to receive the student of the month from the Clinton Public Schools. Congratulations. Now, we have some other things that we'd like to give you. Start with our representative from the Clinton Fire Department.
All right. So first off, I know some of you guys are looking at me in uniform over there. I'm not here because of the seven-carat pact in the... I am very happy to be here for Michael, the hero of the day. So there was, I guess, some confusion as to, you know, Michael's out-of-district. There was some word that he might be from Berlin, but we know in fact that you are from Clinton. You have a nice Boston Field Office shirt there. So to avoid any further confusion, in honor of your brave act where seconds count in your quick action, we would like to present you with a shirt from the Clinton Fire Department. For April being Autism Awareness Month, we added the Autism Awareness ribbon on the shirt for you, and we'd be honored if you'd wear it. With pride.
Would you like to share with all these folks here what you'd like to be when you grow up?
An emergency medical technician.
What's that one more for you? Mr. Bates?
Sure. So be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Michael Anthony Gomez in recognition of taking control of a serious and otherwise dangerous situation and in doing so, saved the life of your bus driver. The entire membership of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts House of Representatives extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good and fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this 22nd day of April 2019 by Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, offered by State Representative Harold Notton Jr.
And last but not least, one more award. Scott Sheridan, who is Vice President of Van Poel.
Michael, one of the definitions of bravery is to be able to act when something scary happens. You were in events where something very scary happened, but you took great action. You took care of the driver. He wanted to tell you thank you very much. He appreciates what you did. But great job. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to shake a hand. Congratulations. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we will take just a few-minute break before we get into the superintendent's report. If you would like to stay, we'd love to have you stay. If you choose not to and want to take pictures outside, we understand completely, and thank you very much for coming to our month's celebration. Dr. Meyer, the floor is yours.
Okay. So the first two on here are pretty much just some housekeeping. We did receive a resignation letter from Megan Ganeski, effective the end of the year. She's currently a middle school special ed teacher. She stated in her letter that her time at Clinton's been absolute joy, allowing her to work with the opportunity of multiple, multitude of hard-working students in a variety of settings. And so she would not be who she was today as an educator if it were not for the support of her colleagues during her tenure with Clinton. So I will make sure that before the school year is over, we have an opportunity to meet Megan for an exit interview.
Great. Thank you. Please wish her well from us.
And we also have a leave of absence request. And we also have a leave of absence request from Lindsay Lawton. It's a maternity leave that basically would be opening the 2019-2020 school year. So it's basically requesting maternity leave to take place starting on August 28th, 2019. Expected return to work October 15th, 2019. So I know in the past, we, I mean, it's a maternity leave, it's a protected leave. So in the past, I know you have, you guys have voted to accept that leave. If you want to continue that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't think it's necessary for us to do it, but, you know, in terms of our practice, I'll accept a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to accept the maternity leave as detailed.
I'll make a motion to accept the maternity leave.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Please pass along our best wishes.
As we mentioned, you know, I know it's always kind of awkward because you sort of take a vote on that, although it's protected, but it is a leave of absence. There is a provision in the contract where they could apply for a leave of absence. It's not a protected, guaranteed one.
Right.
In which case, that would require some committee approvals. That's typically kind of why we bring it up in that same sort of area.
I understand.
All right, so the next thing we would roll right into would be the FY '19 third quarter budget update. So Karen, come on up. I think we're going to start with athletics. So you're going to have...
Mr. Smith?
...by our athletic director.
Thank you both for being here.
So with the winter athletics, I'm going to quickly go over the numbers, and then I'm going to leave it to John. So on the winter athletic report. On page one, the summary of the fall and winter. I gave you the athletes, number of athletes, and the receipts for the years 14 through 19. In total, FY '19 athletes, there's 353 for the winter. The total is 353 for the fall and winter. We're up seven athletes this year. The winter athletes, 130, up eight athletes over FY '18, and it's due to basketball increases. Seem to have more basketball players this year. The high school had nine or six athletes in the winter, and the middle school, 34. The receipts, the total receipts to date for FY '19, 16,524. It's down 24,801 for the last year, but that's really only due to the elimination of the athletic fees. The winter gate receipts are actually up. They're up 2,878. With your winter gate receipts were 7,205, your fall were 6,940. Your donations, 2,153 to date. That's up 849 over last year. And the largest donation was in memory of Bernie Gahan. Is that how you say it?
Yep.
And that was approximately 1,700.
Yeah, 225 for winter athletic fees is that, kids that are playing somewhere else.
Right.
So we have to pay, we have to pay...
So Hudson, Hudson's gymnastic co-op asked for, I think, $50 from each athlete, and then we had, we had a Lemonster runs a hockey program for girls that we co-op in, and I believe it's $125 that they asked for, you know, rental fees. And it's no more than that they would ask for their regular athletes at Lemonster.
Sure. So we just pay it with their kids. So we paid it as the Athletic Association, as our group?
Right.
Thank you. So...
Wait, so did the students pay that?
The students paid.
Yeah, students paid.
Thank you.
Okay. On page two and three, the further detail by sport. I wasn't planning on going into it, but you can see, if you want to see how many participants were in each sport. If you have further questions on that, you can probably ask John when he starts to do his report. But that's, you've got the fall athletic report, and then the next, I mean, the winter, and then the fall. The following, it begins the general fund athletics, page four. So the general fund, the athletic sections in the general fund, the total budget for athletics goes 307, 230, and 2331, we've expended 207, 123. That's 67% of the total budget. Year-to-date balance, 100,107. There's incumbences of 77, 767. So including the incumbences, we still have 22,339 for the spring sports and any other expenditures that John has left in the general fund. So John still appears to have a really good hold on his budget, and he's not overspending. The revolving fund began the year with, it's on the same page at the bottom. We began the year with 35,570. The revenue we've gotten in so far in the revolving account is 16,523. The expenses are only 4,770 this year, and the year-to-date balance is 47,323. That's really good considering we didn't have any athletic fees. So we did increase the general fund athletics, so we have been able to pay more of our expenditures out of the general fund. So right now, I feel we're in pretty good shape for athletics going into the spring for next year.
So I thought it was 30,000. I might be off on the amount. We had an amount for a new sport. Is that in there somewhere?
I don't think it was 30,000, I think it was the amount we increased by because of the user fees.
And that's...
But there was, there was amounts for a new sport. I think it was like 12,000, actually. It was...
Was that rolled in there somewhere?
That's in there. That's in those, like, supplies and materials. See where there's like 17,000 left? That was for like uniforms and have been for a new sport.
So is there something?
There's still some left. You can see that.
Yeah, I don't, I could talk to you later about it.
Yeah. I think we're going to start, and definitely going to start to look at, as we mentioned, one of the things, some of the other needs that we know we have for things like uniforms and those types of things across the board that might be things we want to address this fiscal year, since it looks like we would be able to go for the year's...
But is there, is there going to be money left, or, and I don't know how much, because I don't, it's your expertise, I guess I'll ask you. And I apologize putting you on the spot, because I said I'd never do this, but the players that we have that play lacrosse now with Hudson.
Right.
So our seventh and eighth graders, you know, can't play till they're freshmen, right? Which, which I understand, right?
Correct.
But if we don't have any, any equipment or any lacrosse, anything for them to start in the seventh and eighth grade, then, you know, when they get to be freshmen, to play somewhere, they're going to be picking up from scratch. So is there, is there money in, under that? And again, I apologize for 30 grand, which was the wrong number, but is there money in there to buy, you know, some net balls, maybe a couple sticks, something so that in the seventh and eighth grade, whether they do a clinic, would they do it during gym, you know, however, just so they can start to pick the game up so that they're not going out to Hudson as freshmen, never seeing the game? The long story, I'm sure. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's something that I know, and I know there's been a little bit of talk, I think with, you know, Nishoba and looking kind of what they might be doing for their middle school, and we can try to see and what that might entail. Like I said, I know lacrosse would be a little tricky because you don't, you know, it's not like it's football where you buy every single pad, but it's not quite like hockey, I think, where you don't buy any pads. It's sort of like, you know, you might buy the helmets, but not the shoulder pads. I don't know exactly. So we've got to kind of work down that. But I do think that definitely it's a sport that's growing, whether it's from an athletic fund or from the general fund for physical education, getting some of those materials so that those students can be exposed to it as...
That's what some of these, they have a couple of their nets and, you know, stuff that we can bring up on the cheap, just to expose them to it. And I apologize.
We were able to get, some of the things that we just purchased was the sled and...
Right, so we purchased a, we replaced a football sled that's been out there duct-taped with pads for a long, long time. And I think that sled's been pushed around since 1960. So we finally got some money to purchase a new sled. We're going to be able to replace the field hockey uniforms as a whole. And when I talked to the coach, she said that it's been 10 years since those uniforms were replaced, or we're replacing, and they have a JV team now too. So, so the JV team and the field hockey team will all get new uniforms. I think we got a better grasp of, obviously, I think with no fees, our boys soccer team really took off this year. So this year was the first year that we had sufficient numbers to run a JV team, and we definitely had a uniform problem there, where, I mean, it almost, I had to go to Corner Sports and buy some emergency uniforms because we just didn't have enough, and some varsity players were sharing their uniforms with their cousins so everybody could play, you know. So it's always good that we get uniforms there. I took us, we had, I think we have a big eighth-grade class coming up for girls soccer. So there, I think there was 12 eighth graders that played on the middle school team. I had, we had the, we had Kate Moran survey those kids if they were going to continue their soccer career at Clinton High, and all of them checked off yes. So I think that we're going to finally be able to bring back JV girls soccer, and so we're going to replenish the girls soccer team with uniforms, so we'll have enough for varsity and JV girls soccer next year.
Questions?
Yeah.
Did you have more, Mr. Smith, before? Okay, go ahead.
So first of all, I'd like to, you know, say how fantastic it is to see such an increase in participation, especially with the younger athletes. I guess my question is, due to the increase as far as a lot of the, you know, younger programs that were not anticipated, probably due to participation, we have a lot more kids that, you know, required additional teams, which is fantastic. Was that the cause of the increase in the officials that was not scheduled for?
I would believe so, yes.
So there wasn't a league that also increased on us? Because when I'm looking at what we budgeted for you as far as for the, for the officials, it seems like we're way down as far as for the rest of the year. But I, when I look at our participation, I see that we've added at least four different teams. So I didn't know if that was the cause of that increase.
Do you mean the amount we spent for officials from the general fund?
So right now, I'm looking at, you know, we've already spent 32 for two seasons. We have pretty much the whole third season coming up. So it looks like, you know, if I do simple math, we're going to be over. But then, when I look at the numbers that have been shared, we increased four additional teams that I can see.
Right. We did, it's partly, partly that, but also we haven't really hit our revolving fund that much yet. And we typically don't do that yet. We would try to expend all the general fund before we would hit...
But before I'm talking about revolving fund, I'm looking at what we budgeted for.
Mike, I'd say, I think you're, you're correct. So some of the things that we were able to have this fall, things like JV field hockey, which we were able to have with the new numbers, but we didn't budget on it. We could do it pretty much on the cheap because we had the uniforms, or most of the uniforms. The buses were already going to the game. The only extra cost for that really became the coach and the, and the officials. So I think, you know, that's part of why maybe, you know, you see in the supplies and materials, it's still kind of higher there because even though when we talked about new sports, we were thinking we might have to buy everything for a whole new sport. You know, we didn't necessarily need to do that, but by adding a lot of these JV programs or freshman programs and increasing the participation that way, you know, it does incur some official's cost.
And I also would like to give another compliment. Looking at your gate receipts with similar participation, how much that's increased, that's definitely due to efficiency. So thank you for your hard work.
Other questions? Did you have more for us?
I mean, I just jotted down some winter team news if you guys want to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Want to hear it. I'm sure if you follow me on social media, you guys already heard all this stuff. All right, so first, some winter team news. I just said the boys varsity basketball team doubled their, doubled their win total this year. They return 10 varsity players next year. We also had a sophomore, Cam Ween, who was selected as a midwalk all-star. The JV basketball program was very successful as they finished 16 and 3. And this was the first year we had a full set of games for the JV, JV2 program, which includes freshmen and a few sophomore players for the boys basketball program. They finished 8 and 8. And again, a big thank you to St. John's Gym for providing a facility in which I don't think we'd be able to support with practices and additional games. To have a place where kids know they are practicing at 2:30 every day is a huge, huge thing. The CMS basketball team had a full roster of 18 players. They finished their season at attendance 7. The girls' basketball qualified for the district tournament the first time in nine years. Seniors Nellie Munier and Alexis Blaisdell were selected as midwalk all-stars. Nellie Munier also became the thousand, the 10,000-point scorer in school history. She scored her 1,000th point in front of a standing-room-only crowd in the CHS gym versus Oakmont. And it was very nice that Lauren Byron, who was our last 1,000-point scorer, came and presented her with a 1,000-point ball. Nellie was also selected as the co-MVP of the midwalk league. She's the first girl to earn MVP honors for Clinton since Lauren Byron in 2009. The JV girls' team finished 8 and 11. A majority of our team was made up of eighth graders, as we use the eighth-grade waiver. CMS rostered 16 players as they competed very hard throughout the season. The girls' basketball program ran a February diaper drive in which they collected over 10,000 individual diapers and wipes. The winter cheer team, I know you guys heard a lot about them for the past couple weeks, but they both competed at the varsity and JV level. The varsity cheer team was named league and regional champions. Their qualifying score earned them a bid to nationals for the first time in program history. They will compete in, at Virginia Beach the first week of May. They have three all-stars, Elizabeth McNamara, Jocelyn Rosenbaum, and Morgan Low. I thought our co-op programs were very well represented by Clinton athletes, and we had a lot of successful athletes at those programs. For co-op wrestling with Nishoba, Clinton student athlete Brevin Kinsella won the state tournament at 152 pounds, and he placed third nationally. Brevin is the third student athlete to earn an individual state title for Clinton High School. The ones before him were Kevin Lynch in golf in 1978 and Heidi Erickson in 1979 for a javelin throw. The co-op boys hockey with Nishoba, we had a sophomore that made the all-star team, Dan Lemansky. For co-op girls' ice hockey, we had sophomore Alana Hoag, who started for Lemonster. Co-op gymnastics, we're represented by Autumn Gerson and Kylie Dobek, both complete, competed in the league championships and placed second in the league championship meet. And co-op swimming with Nishoba, we had junior Liam Payet, who was named an all-star. Liam also set school records at Nishoba for the 200 freestyle, the 200 butterfly, and was part of the swimming relay team that qualified for the, for the district race of the states. Just a few improvements that we made over in the winter. We have, we now have a 1,000-point banner that has been updated in Nellie Munier, and we also purchased a state individual champions banner that is hanging in our gym at the moment now. Athletic donations are coming in at a high rate, many in memory of Coach Bernie Gahan. Clinton High School Athletics did a social meet and greet with the Clinton Middle School during the winter season. During the middle school lunches, the athletes mingled with CMS students, and the cheerleaders led the, led the T, the school in cheers and routines while they were at the lunch. It was a very nice day. Let's see, I went through the new uniforms being purchased, all right? And then a couple new things that are just going on is the new co-op partnership with Hudson. We currently have two boys and five girls at play. The athletic department and the Clinton Booster Club are sponsoring a senior sports banquet on May 21st. The Clinton Booster Club also sponsored travel jackets this season for the girls' basketball program, and they provided a Spirit Bus for the girls' first district game in nine years. And on Saturday, April 27th, we're going to run a baseball alumni game at 11:00 a.m. at Fuller Field in the memory of Coach Gahan. All proceeds will go, will go towards the scholarship fund in honor of Coach Gahan's name.
That's it?
Well done.
That's why you asked me? Hey, I was going to say, that, and a couple people have mentioned, I'm glad you brought it, that state banner, which you mentioned, Lynchy and Heidi Erickson did back in '78, '79, that's awesome you guys got that up there because it's just seemed to be left off of all the banners, all the great teams we've had. It just seemed to get, not left, just kind of forgotten, I think.
Right, I was, I was very curious when Brevin won a state title and if any of us have, any of our former alumni have ever done that before. So we did our homework. I got together with Libby, and we looked at the yearbooks, and I asked, I asked all the coaches at the track, certainly Angel Neves came up and said, "This guy won this, this guy won this." So we, half of them didn't win it, but... So lucky we did our homework, there are at least five extra men. It's very good. And I contacted those families too and let them know that their names are represented out in our gym, and they're very, very happy with that.
Thanks, that's awesome.
Best wishes for continued success. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Good work. Thanks, Mr. Spiddy.
You can stay and help me. All right, moving on to the third quarter. So the general fund, from page one to four, the general fund by account, the year-to-date expenditures, 13,9962, 102. We spent 61% of the budget thus far.
Sorry. Where are we?
On page one through four is the expenditures...
Those numbers she's reading are the totals on, on page four. The green line on page four. Thank you.
Okay, so on page four at the bottom, so the total expenditures, thirteen million nine fifty-two one oh two. Sixty-one percent of the budget has been spent to date. The encumbered expenditures, nine million three thirty-one six seventeen. So if I include the encumbered balance prior to the circuit breaker adjustment, we're at negative four sixty-six oh nine five. However, we have an anticipated circuit breaker adjustment of eight hundred and seventeen nine seventy-six. So if I include that, then the balance right now to spend is three hundred and fifty-one eight hundred and eighty. Some of the areas that are over budget, pretty much what we've been saying all year, the fed contracted medical and therapeutic services is over budget, one twenty-seven six ninety-four. That area is one that I continue to watch and monitor. That has the PT, the PT assistant orientation mobility, BCBA psychologists, the alternative classroom at the elementary school for the autistic class.
And it's important to note that although that's over, we did have a budgeted salary for a BCBA that we weren't able to fill that position, and we made it up the difference with the contracted services. So a good portion of that overage actually comes from that salary account, if you think of it that way.
Right, there's forty-nine thousand six oh four for the BCBA, which can offset that. That would bring the overage down to only seventy-eight thousand approximately. The vocational tuition, the vocational, the transportation is the same as the last report where we have the negative in those two areas. That was due to additional student at Asvet Valley and one move in at Norfolk Daggers.
The van, if I'm confused, is that the van that we bought, or is this on the last page of all of?
Yeah, the encumbered van because it's actually going to be coming in shortly.
So is this the second one?
Yeah.
Yeah, was the one where you guys voted on last meeting?
Okay.
That'll be coming in shortly. That's one that you approved at trans.
Yep.
The other, there's a couple of other areas I just wanted to note. The ground service contract is over by seventeen thousand five hundred, and the maintenance of equipment service contract is over by five thousand four fifty-two. On the grounds, there was some additional services done in the fields, upgrade the irrigation system, and they added the middle school baseball field to the contract.
Oh, okay.
Okay. For the service contracts on the equipment, the director of facilities added some more to that contract, to some of the gym equipment and bleachers, he added a little more to that contract. That's why those two are over. The repairs remains, continue to be over budget right now, one twenty-two nine sixty-six. However, I have at the moment in rental facilities, one hundred and seventeen six fifty-nine in the revolving account to fall back on if needed for that.
I think, was there even, I don't know if there's any of this needed to get charged to the warrant or not, or that, those are different ones? Does that replacement, those are different?
No, but we do, we have almost the whole amount. If we really wanted to deplete all our repair, I wouldn't suggest it, but we do have that much in there. The next, if anybody have any questions on any individual accounts?
I'm going to wait until we get to the revolving.
I'm sorry, so the, with that, we're not asking my purse, but with the landscaping company, that seventeen grand, is that just a one-time thing because of picking up the middle school now, or is that contract, do you know if that's going to increase our cost?
He's got the, to my understanding, their contract is, in effect, they have their contract, I don't know if it's going to change when he brings all his over.
I think some of it was part of their contracted service for upgrading the irrigation system, remember he came and talked about that? That shouldn't be an ongoing part. But I do, I don't know, I know he was meeting with them to go over the whole needs of the field, but.
Right, he might be.
I remember a lot of these are the line items that'll end up getting kind of wrecked as a budget next year anyway.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
I know he increased some of the contracts, but like I said, if they pull out those accounts to his budget. Do you have any others?
No, thanks.
Okay. The next few pages, I broke it down, I usually break it down by school and vice-fed. And the only thing I wanted to note on that was, we do see that the elementary school seems to appear to be over budget, but I just wanted to say as far as noting that they did have that additional grade transferred over from the middle school. So, and the middle school has additional money left there. So kind of with the one extra grade going over there, they have a little more expenditures.
So they should pay up for it.
Right. So Cameron's going to have to stitch it up. Other than that, there's nothing glaring that indicates excessive spending over budget by the schools. Okay, so that's broken down by the different schools, fed technology, we've got athletics. And then that brings me down to the circuit breaker. The top that we'll see is the circuit breaker. The circuit breaker report is the same as the last report, with the exception to the student count. We began the year with eight seventeen nine seventy-five. We're estimated to receive about six seventy-two two sixty-three. The year-end balance, I'm estimating at six seventy-two two sixty-three. The only difference is this year, I mean, this quarter, I have thirty-seven students. There was one additional collaborative student since the last report. The other thing I did want to note that at the most recent Masbo meeting, Jay Sullivan from the Department of Ed has indicated that the circuit breaker may be lower this year due to the fact there's a lot of districts putting in for extraordinary relief. We'll lower the amount of money they have to give out. So he was indicating perhaps maybe as low as sixty-seven percent. So that's still up in the air, but that's something he mentioned.
What did we budget for? Seventy-two?
We had seventy-two at this point.
But what did we budget for?
We've been budgeting for the amount that we have left the following year.
So we've been kind of doing, I'd say, a year behind, a year behind, we've been able to do that. So we're budgeting that exact amount.
I understand what you're saying. For next year, though, what percentage did we pick? Did we pick seventy-two percent, or do we pick sixty-eight percent?
For FY twenty? We just use the actuals that we got this year of the seventy-two percent. So our goal is we always try to use the previous year's circuit breaker for the following year because you have one year to use it.
Okay.
Yeah. So you're right, that way it'll affect us. So what it'll do is whatever the rate they set for next year will affect us. Whatever rate they, whatever rate they establish for the FY nineteen reimbursement that we received in FY twenty will actually impact our FY twenty-one budget.
And that's conflicting messages because there's been other people that have said seventy-two percent is what we should anticipate to come in.
Yeah.
So there's conflicting messages out there. With circuit breaker, you know, due to the added district placements dropping conservatively this year, which is fantastic, are, do we know, you know, if you were to forecast what we have in place right now, how much less we've spent out of, you know, circuit breaker moving forward? And the reason why I'm asking is, we have a hefty balance that's in the circuit breaker. Would we consider the difference of what we anticipated spending, knowing that it's not going to impact our surplus that we thought we were going to be budgeting for with some form of capital improvement item? You know, because you don't, you're carrying over one point three million dollars in circuit breaker.
Well, we won't because we have to apply the eight seventeen nine seventy-six by the end of this year. So we have to apply that this year. So we won't carry over any more than the, we won't be able to carry that eight seventeen over. We'll be able to carry over that six seventy-two.
Right.
Yeah. And the six seventy-two is what we've built in as a revenue source for the FY twenty budget.
We've been trying to keep that, what we have left in that balance year before is what we use as the budget for the following year.
Right, but we have a surplus of one point three, right?
Well, it's not a surplus because we budgeted for it. So it's like, when we fit, when we made the budget, when you see our budget chart, you know, and we have like the general fund, and we have school choice, and we have circuit breaker, like we account for that amount when we do that in the budget process. So when you see our FY twenty budget proposal now, we have that six seventy-two two sixty-three in there as a revenue source that we're already planning on using.
But we have a circuit breaker balance that's carrying over from one year to the next.
Yes, yes, yes.
And that's one point three million dollars right now.
Right now, if we didn't apply anything to this year, but we would have, we have to apply money to this year.
That's still with the five hundred and four thousand dollars already applied to it.
No, we haven't applied, that's, that five oh four is just the actual.
That's the balance right now.
Okay, so that's where I'm going with my next question. So Steve, the number you're mentioning, six what?
The six seventy-two.
So is that what our actual expense is, so there's a difference of one seventy roughly?
No, so the eight seventeen, so typically what we do is we've typically applied our circuit breaker reimbursement to our out-of-district tuition. So we will have more than eight hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in out-of-district tuition this year, so we will apply that down. So that's when you go to that, like, page four, where you had that bottom green line.
Where it says how much we're.
You can see that, like, right now, without any circuit breaker, we would be four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in the hole. If we apply that, so this is, I think, what you're getting at, is this thing here, is that if we apply that full eight hundred and seventeen thousand, then that means our balance in our general fund right now today would be three fifty-one. Our unencumbered balance in the general fund today is three fifty-one eight eight zero. Yeah, so that's the number, yeah.
So you're indicating, are we going to spend more of the circuit breaker? Is that what you mean?
Awesome. I think for the general public, what they don't understand is, it's like our tax return that we're spending for what we spent the year, you know, what we spent the year before that seventy-two percent. And I think the general public doesn't understand that.
Okay.
So what I'm getting at is, so we're having a lot less out-of-district placements this year. So our circuit breaker, you're talking about potentially being four to five percent less coming our way for next year, but then you're also talking about less money that we're spending, so less percentage that you can get back on top of that. So what I'm getting at is, how are we going to offset that for twenty? Because we're not going to be getting, you know, the same amount of money that we normally would get back. So are you offsetting that with that surplus of the three fifty? Is that going to offset?
It's helping us. What we're doing is we're trying to make sure that we're, that's allowing us to free up some general fund money for this year that we're able to use to, like, do things like purchase the van now, those types of things, so that we're able to start getting some of those items that we might have wanted for next year, but we don't be able to afford next year, and get those out of the way now. Not purchasing for next year, but some are existing items that we can use immediately or their existing debt that we have already.
So with that shortage that we're going to be working with for next year, you feel like you're going to be able to offset that?
Yeah, we'll be okay for next year, yeah. But I think you're right, it is a continued trend where, you know, it was eight hundred and seventeen thousand, now it's going to be six seventy-two next year. Next year, it should even be like, you know, in FY twenty-one, it would be five hundred and twenty or something like that, because as you reduce those out-of-district placements, you're reducing it.
And you've done a great job of pulling out salaries and different things out of that money that has been there in the past, but is there any other expenses that you need to pull out of that because we can't count on that right now?
I think it's, I think for circuit breaker, it's okay because we've been typically using that for out-of-district tuition. And like you said, it's, that's sort of, because it's kind of like that tax return, right? It's a reimbursement for what you spent, that as long as our out-of-district tuition rates, expenditures continue to decrease, we should be okay.
Okay.
Especially with the way that we've been doing it, where we're able to spend what we have left last year and following year. Because remember, when I first started, there was nothing in the circuit breaker when I first started, so it's nothing to carry over the next year. So we've gotten to a good place.
So what constitutes extraordinary relief? I mean, I'm sure we're taking advantage of that if it ever was applied.
Right, we look at the.
Right, we've got it, we got it one year when I was here. But this year, it would be if your expenditures exceed what you thought they were going to be. So you have to do it. They just had it. You have to fill out the report and then decide whether you're at that level that you get extraordinary relief. But we have less than we had thought, so.
Which we're doing.
And I do know, a lot of times we refer to circuit breaker, we always talk about out-of-district placement. I do know that with some of the, the net programs we're bringing into the district, the way that we're, I know the way that we're wording those IEPs and making sure that those services are captured, even though students who are in district are, we're going to be able to probably recoup some of those expenditures through circuit breaker as well.
Anything else?
Okay. Okay, the next one would be school choice. The school choice, I did have an error, I think Ed last, the last quarter I did it, said he thought there was more, and I had that wrong beginning balance on my report from last time in the second quarter.
What page is the school choice on?
The school choice is right after circuit breaker.
This thing? No?
No, it's right after circuit, right after circuit breaker.
All right, I'll find it, so you go on. Circuit breaker. I have technology after that.
Jesus, sorry. Make sure you're informed. Go on.
Okay, so the beginning balance is four ten eight ninety-seven. Actual to date, we have three ninety-one two oh six gotten thus far. Expected to receive five seventeen four fifteen from the state, but this does not include this fed adjustment, which we should receive at the end of the fiscal year. We've budgeted salaries in the amount of six twenty-four seven forty-five. So if we follow with the budget, we're estimated to have three oh three five sixty-seven left in the school choice by the end of the year. We are down four school choice students since the last report right now. As of the last report I got from Mary, we're at seventy-eight.
As you were, so that's one of the things where we talked about how last year, you know, your school choice account isn't, you know, it shouldn't just be a savings account, right? So we have four hundred ten thousand dollars as a beginning balance, but we went into the year planning to budget about a hundred thousand dollars more than what we anticipated we were going to receive because we wanted to kind of, you know, we didn't want to, it's like it's not a savings account, right? We're supposed to be using that to help. But we also didn't want to create a funding cliff.
Right.
So we only used about a third of it, and then our goal for next year is to plan on using about a third of it. And if we keep adjusting, say you're using a third, you never really hit like a funding cliff. And as we see how things change, and you know, one of the things we said is that eventually you're going to need to change, or chapter seventy's going to need to change, and chapter seventy seems to be changing, so I think we'll be okay.
The next would be the grant summary page. There's just a slight change in the grants. We did get a little bit of extra money in Title II A, out of two forty fed grant, two sixty-two fed grant, and then we also got some money for the high school reality fair. So the award, the total FY nineteen grant award is up about five thousand eight fifty-seven. And we continue, we're continuing to monitor the grants and spend them so that we can expend them all by the end of the year. So that's one thing with the grants. The revolving is the sheet that I gave you when we first got here. The FY nineteen capital improvement article, the balance as of right now is one twenty-two six twenty-five. They did buy a little bit of security cameras, but they still have some money left there. The FY nineteen textbook and technology article, as of this report, there's a balance of fifteen thousand six forty-one. However, we're in the process of ordering the technologies, more technologies, so that article will be completed shortly. As I said, the rental of facilities is at balance of one seventeen six fifty-nine. The gifts and donations balance right now is at thirty-six thousand seventy, thirty-six thousand seventy dollars.
The rental facility, besides the central office, what else?
We have.
Some of the businesses and flag.
The flag rent.
Two classrooms, I think, two classrooms.
It's about thirty thousand.
Middle school, yeah.
Yeah, mostly that. And we're also as.
When the movie comes to town, it uses our partner.
Right. And we're paying for the cleaning of the central office to do that. With that outside agency. The student activity, I did include that for the elementary, middle school, and high school. I have those balances there. And on the high school, we're doing really well on the senior classes. The only class that we have left right now that needs to get their money out is the class of two thousand and eighteen, but their advisor contacted me last week, and she's working with the student offices to get all the paperwork ready to transfer their balance. So we should be fine by the end of the year with all the senior classes. The, I do not, did not include boot service on this report. We're going to be doing that separately on the next report.
Okay.
So if you have any questions about boot service, if you want to hold that for the next report. Anybody have any questions?
Any other questions for Karen? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so the next agenda item was FY twenty budget revisions. We don't have a full revised FY twenty budget to go over at this point, which just seems like it was way too short of a turnaround between from when we had our meeting with the FinCom till today. We are working on some of those adjustments. Some of the things, we did get the updated proposed chapter seventy. Some of the things, we did get the updated proposed chapter seventy increases from the, I believe it was the House Ways and Means was the next one that was just released. And, you know, so we talked about how the governor's, his number is typically the lower number. Our chapter seventy increase went up from like seven hundred and seventy thousand to like eight hundred and fifteen thousand or something like that, another thirty thousand dollars or so. So the, you know, that's something that, you know, I know, and I know, if you talk, we were at the FinCom presentation, they, you know, state, school aid is town aid, it's all one big pot of money, we understand that, but he does recognize that those, that that's, that's what it's intended for, so, so that was positive to at least see that it's still trending in that positive direction for us. Some of the things that we need to update for version B that we want to make sure as accurate as possible for the next meeting are going to be our vocational tuition, our special education tuition, and our special education out-of-district transportation. We'll just review all those one more time. We did do requests for proposals for specialty transportation. We did have a company that returned one that was, seemed to present a considerable savings of the company we've been using. So we're just confirming some things, but it was, you know, a company that really looked closely at our routes and had some proposals in terms of how they could cost share them with districts, we weren't paying for multiple, you know, the same routes, and, and it looks very promising if that's going to be, if it's going to, if it's going to meet our needs, so we're, we're pursuing that. We're also making some adjustments to our extended school year services, and also we've gotten a lot of our retirement letters officially, and so there might have been some people that we know have, which we'll present it by the next meeting, and then we'll recognize our retirees at the second meeting in May. But the, you know, we kind of know, we sort of have that list of who we project is going to retire, but we don't necessarily know until we kind of have all the letters in there. So some of the things we'll make now, some salary adjustments to, now that we know some people are definitely intending to retire, we can look at and say, we don't need to put their full salary and we can put the cost of replacement essentially in there. And then as was mentioned at the, at the last meeting, we continue to look at our, our ESL services numbers and our special education numbers and just make sure that we feel that what we have in there is adequate to, to meet those needs, make sure that we feel comfortable with that plan. So my goal is, our next meeting, we actually have the three-week layover now because of the fifth, the fifth Monday in April, I think. So there's, our next meeting will be May thirteenth, I believe. Is that what it says on the front? It's not on the front. I believe that's the next one. It's, and then, then our next one is going to be a, a goofy one, the, it's May thirteenth is our next school committee meeting, and then May twenty-eighth, it's a Tuesday because of the Memorial Day. So Monday the thirteenth, I believe, and then Tuesday the twenty-eighth. So our goal will be on May thirteenth is that we would be presenting, if you look on our agenda for the beginning of the year, we're going to present kind of plans for next year, so we kind of give that over to you at PowerPoint of like what would next year look like, and, and the budget to match that, so that hopefully we have a, a budget in place. And then if you guys are comfortable with that, hopefully we can just vote to kind of approve that budget. We'll try to make sure that we've reached out to the finance committee and selectmen, any input we have from them to make sure that we're putting together something that's going to work for them. And, and then if we need to make any last minute changes, we'll do it for the meeting on the twenty-eighth, and then we should be good to go. Any questions on FY twenty budget or concerns? All right, the next sheet in your packet, kindergarten school choice information. I just tried to look, I know we had the question of kind of the students that come, come to kindergarten, that school choice in for kindergarten and then maybe don't continue to grade one because some of the neighboring districts didn't have free full-day kindergarten, so so school, students might have school choice in to get free full-day kindergarten and then leave. So if you look at that, you know, the change, basically, the, the change over there means if you follow the same class, so that like the hundred and sixty-one kids who were enrolled in kindergarten in FY eleven, six of them are school choice kids, and then in FY twelve, when they became first graders, there were only three who were school choice kids, so we lost basically three school choice kids. So you can see that, yes, in the, from like eleven to twelve, twelve to thirteen, thirteen to fourteen, we did have, you know, three or four kids a year who basically were coming in kindergarten as school choice but then leaving. And it's net numbers too, so I mean, there could have been offset by some other kids who came in. And then the, the last couple of years, it hasn't been as big an issue. You can see actually our school choice numbers increased as they went from, from K to first grade. So, you know, I guess one thing that just puts it in perspective is it's not a huge change. I mean, it's not like it's ten kids that are, you know, come in or fifteen kids, like a whole class is coming in and then leaving after one year. So, you know, is it exact, you know, what trend is this really showing? Not a lot, just that it's not a massive change, so.
So it's not a current trend?
I don't think it's a current trend right now.
It was in the past, but it's not now.
Yeah.
At no point is it affecting any, any kids come to Clinton?
Yeah.
And it's not, it should actually be a plan for, so there's not taxing or overburdening the teachers in that class. So it's not.
Right, so that's the thing, we were saying, it's not, it's not to the point where they're bringing, right, but it's not like they're bringing in, it's not like ten kids are coming in for kindergarten and we're having to hire another teacher to get our class sizes down, so.
And, and thank you for the information. I think it, it tells me two things. One, that it, it, there's, there's a bit of a false narrative that kids are coming into Clinton only to go out as first graders because it doesn't certainly seem to be that. I do think for us, it's a cautionary tale though, as a, as a committee, to continue to look at those numbers per grade level and not approve school choice for a certain grade level if there's already numbers that are going to push us beyond. So, and, and, you know, for now, it's, it's fine, but I just think in terms of, we can't make a blanket statement that we just open the doors to all grade levels if that's going to impact the staffing levels at, at a particular grade level, in terms of class size, or, or, you know, across a, a school, middle school, elementary school, what have you. So I just, I think it's something that we want to make sure that we have the information as early as possible for next year's vote. I, I think the vote this year was fine, and I think it was prudent that we closed it off at certain places, but it, for me, this, this is why I think it's worth delving deep into this to make sure that we keep the doors open for anyone that wants to be here in the Clinton Public Schools, but we do it prudently and responsibly.
And I do know the other part was high school class sizes. We're working on getting that preliminary information. I have, I think I have it all now, but I think I, I didn't have time to get it in the packet. So when we talk about plans for next year, at the next meeting, you can try to get some of that class size information into that PowerPoint as well.
And, you know, picking up with the question, so we've left the discretion to you as superintendent as far as who you're accepting in, so before you accept the student in, you're looking at your class sections to know, okay, I don't need another teacher to run at this threshold of a number so that we're kind of being.
And really the process should be is, if we, as we get close to that and feel that we're really in danger of that, I should bring it to, to, to the committee to vote to close that grade.
Which is what we did in the last meeting.
Right, but we can continue to do that throughout the year, so like you could continue.
Have numbers in mind per classes.
Yeah, so we'll look at that in a moment and kind of keep looking at that.
So if there was a red flag, you'd bring that forward.
All right.
Strategic district improvement plan?
Yeah, next one, we had the technology update from the strategic, strategic plan. Technology is actually a fairly short one, although I feel like it encompasses a lot. So the first goal obviously was the looking at a hundred percent of our students who have a one-to-one access. As you know, we have that budget in there to start with the freshman class next year. We have in there the device and cases for the freshman class, and we'll try to work on building from that, from that point on. Regardless of what happens with the budget as we go through, even if the FinCom encourages us to move some to a warrant article, I want to keep that money in the actual budget because that's part of that refresh plan. We don't want to be voting those out of warrant articles. Reallocating fifty percent of instructional media material budget to digital content, I mean, I can't necessarily say that we have, you know, that says by 2023, right? So I think as we look at that though, as you remember in the beginning, one of the major purchases was for history, updated history materials, and we are looking at, you know, okay, knowing that we're going to be going one-to-one with the high school, how do we, how do we want to allocate those funds in, in terms of a digital and print mix? So we are cognizant of that. You know, one hundred percent staff personnel is digital-based instructional material. I think that's something we'll begin next year, professional development at the high school, so we can start bringing that onboard. Adequate support staff in the budget this year. There is a, a, another technology assistant in there for, for the high school, which would allow us to now have, you know, if you count Mike as a director of technology, is at the elementary school, and then two assistants, one at the middle school, one at the high school, at least this gets, it gets us, you know, starting for that in terms of the instruction, the hardware support. And provide a consistent allocation of funds to support technology, and that's the, that's the thing I just mentioned about trying to make sure we keep it as a budget line item that we're protecting, that we know that this is something that, to sustain, because I've, I've heard and seen too many times, the, you know, you get the big grant, or you get the big warrant article, or you get the new school, and in the MSBA funding, they reimburse it, and you get, you know, Chromebooks for every kid, and no one really thought about the fact that, okay, now in four years, I have eight hundred Chromebooks that are all going to expire at the same time, you know? So we need to kind of always have that refresh cycle built in place. All right, so that's pretty much it. Human resource search committee update, I know.
Do you want me to update?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, there were over thirty applicants. The search committee screened those applicants, made a recommendation to the town manager and superintendent to set up interviews. Those are on the eighth and ninth of May, and, you know, we have a, a set of questions and a process and a timeline, so I, I, that's moving along.
All right, I think that's good. Then we have two policies that we read last time. It's the first reading, this will be a second reading.
So we have policy E C A F. This is the, for the second reading, security cameras in schools. We've already gone through it and adopted it under a first reading. We'll entertain a motion to accept the policy as a second reading and, and thereby an adoption.
I'll make a motion to accept the reading as second reading and adoption.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the E C F reading adoption.
Yep, it's E C A F. You're okay with the, okay. I just, I just for the minutes, okay. Motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion on policy E C A F? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you. Second policy, also brought to your attention last, in the last meeting, is policy D N, the disposition of surplus property. Entertain a motion to, for a second reading and thereby adoption of the policy.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on policy D N?
Yeah, I said one thing in here. I know this is pretty much probably taken from, from the towns. If the town.
It accompanies the towns.
Right, well, so, so if the town makes, let's say the town, the town administration, if they make any changes to theirs.
Yep.
Do we have to revisit this, or does this just kind of fall in line underneath any?
So I'd say that the, the.
Because I think they're still trying to figure.
Right, the numbers and things, if you have like ten thousand dollars and that kind of stuff, those are from master and roll-up. So that's all from the town. So then the procedure just pretty much says, we're going to follow the procedures established by the town. So we basically made it a blanket policy that says, we're just going to follow what they tell us, because we, that's what we, that's sort of the cycle we were in, where it was kind of like, well, what are we, what's our policy? What's their policy? So we said, let's start with, we have a policy that says we're going to follow what their policy is, and then, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, and the decision of the subcommittee, I think, was a prudent one to, to, to be in line. As a, as a municipal department, we can't be in conflict with, you know, what the town may end up doing because of that, that financial partnership between the, you know, on, on some of these surplus items, so.
But for example, you know, that, that number of ten thousand dollars was recently increased a few years ago as part of the municipal monetization act, right? So the state recognized that they needed to up those limits because it was kind of tying things. But if you look at like the, the town bylaws right now, their number is still at like five hundred dollars, and that hasn't been updated since nineteen thirty-two. So that's part of what they're kind of looking at right now is, is how do we, how do we address that? So, and I think once those kind of come in line, then that'll help us.
Yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting policy D N for second reading and adoption? Unanimous, thank you. All right, under the chairperson's report, there is a curriculum committee meeting on May eighth, at three o'clock. Are there updates from either the safety committee or the marketing subcommittee?
We gave updates for safety last meeting because we haven't met between then. Marketing, we did meet.
Yeah, we met. I, I mean, most of the, we primarily discussed a new role, not new role at the high school, but new responsibility for the librarian, possibly, being a liaison between the high school and the town, helping with some of the content, get down there also, assisting the digital media department with scheduling and resource allocation, but it's early and it's all still.
We talked about a couple of other goals too, like looking at the website, and, you know, the town recently has their new website, and looking at our website and how we're going to move forward with that and those types of things, so.
Yeah, the, the, I don't know if you guys have noticed, the town, yeah, they do.
Yep.
It'd be nice. It was nice.
Yeah, long overdue. It's, it's, it's.
Give me weird looks.